Evening, Farmington Hills. Welcome to our City Council meeting of a regularly scheduled meeting, the first one of 2022, January 10th. Boy, I'm kind of escalating us forward in the year already. Ready for warmer weather, right? January 10th, 2022. And the first thing on our agenda is calling the meeting to order. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Marcia Gershenson, our County Commissioner, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is the roll call.
Mayor Barnett?
Here.
Mayor Protem Newland?
Here.
Councilmembers Bolware, Mark Kerr's absent, Bridges?
Here.
Bruce?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
And Massey?
Here.
Thank you.
Next is the approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I would move approval of the agenda as published.
Okay, is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Dr. Bruce. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda has been passed. The next item is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence to discuss with us or share with us that we all didn't receive? Nope, neither did I. So next is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the consent agenda for regular agenda consideration. Mayor Protem Newland, will you read us the consent agenda, please?
Yes, I will, thank you. The consent agenda as published. Number four, recommended approval of a ward of bid for golf course maintenance equipment to Revel's Turf and Tractor in the amount of $20,831.80, to Spartan Distributors, Inc. in the amount of $31,046.31, and to Midwest Golf and Turf in the amount of $9,444.67. This is CMR 1-22-02. Number five, recommended approval of a ward of contract for the Quaker Valley subdivision Water Main Extension and the Salvador Avenue between Whitlock and Hugo Avenue Water Main and Sanitary Sewer Extension Project to the Brico Escavaging in the amount of $1,456.300, CMR 1-22-03. Recommended approval of proposal for employment recognition program to MTM recognition in the estimated amount of $15,000 for three years with possible extensions. This is CMR 1-22-04. Number seven, recommended approval of a ward of bid for Makerspace Woodshop Dust and Woodchip Collection System to the Madison Street Holdings DBA AGET Manufacturing in the amount not to exceed $70,257. This is CMR 1-22-05. Number eight, recommended approval of purchase of Stryker Power Load Stretcher System and related equipment to the Stryker Medical in the amount of $108,485.40, and this is CMR Number nine, recommended approval of request for employment under Section 10.01a of the City Charter for the position of building assistant. Number 10, recommended approval of request for employment under Section 10.01a of the City Charter for the position of HOCC Building Attendant. Number 11, recommended approval of request for employment under Section 10.01a of the City Charter for the position of swim instructor. Number 12, recommended approval of the City Council Study Session Meeting Minutes of December 13, 2021. And number 13, recommended approval of the City Council Regular Studies, Regular Meeting Minutes of December 15, 2021.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bridges?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I move that Council approve the consent items number four through 11 as read by the Mayor Protem Newland.
Is there a second?
Support.
There's a second. It's been moved by Councilmember Bridges, seconded by Councilmember Massey. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, this is a roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Councilmembers Bruce?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. That brings us to public questions and comments.
Two more items, 12 and 13.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sure.
Yes.
I will make a motion that we approve items 12 and 13 on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Support.
Been moved by Councilmember Noel, seconded by Councilmember Massey, that we approve consent agenda items 12 and 13. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Bridges?
Epstein.
Newland?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we go to public questions and comments. Please limit your comments to five minutes for any item that is not on city business on the agenda. And I call on County Commissioner Marcia Gershenson to give us a county report.
Well, thank you, everyone, and Happy New Year, and welcome back, Mr. Bruce. Nice to see you.
Thank you very much.
The county recently concluded a bipartisan group to assess the needs of seniors in the county, and they've published a blueprint for successful aging. It's going to be available online, and the purpose is to partner with community, other nonprofits in the community that might be focused on a certain area that has been identified in the report as areas that the county can improve on and that we all, as a community, can improve on to be sure that our seniors are aging at home as best as they can. Also, there were new guidelines issued by the Treasury related to the regulations for local communities with the ARPA funding, and I just wanted to be sure you were up to date on them, and if you do need a copy of them or anything, just let me know. There are two vacancies in the county. One is at the Retirement and Deferred Compensation Board. So if you know anybody that might be interested and that is looking to volunteer with our financial team, there's a vacancy there. And also, there's going to be several vacancies on the Community Mental Health Board, and this is always one of our most important appointments, but certainly with everything that's been going on, the need for stronger mental health services is more pronounced than ever. This Community Mental Health Group really oversees so much of the funding that goes to our local agencies. So if this is something that you know somebody that might be interested in, or you are, please reach out to me. Also, I wanted to acknowledge Joe Valentine and his efforts on this D E A R program. We have a young man named Marcus Pearson that will be joining the group, and along with Commissioner Miller, we're going to work on this issue, and hopefully the county can help find some solutions. And then any residents that might need to supplement their groceries, the county, in partnership with Gleaners, gives out free food to anyone in the community at our Oakland County Farmers Market. You can stay in your car. You can stay in your car. There's no appointment needed. It's two Wednesdays a month, and the first one is going to be this Wednesday. So if anybody really needs to supplement their groceries, there's fresh fruits and vegetables and dairy, and it's a great program, a great partnership with Gleaners. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, and hopefully it's a good 2022.
Anybody have any questions for our County Commissioner? No? Thank you so much. I know that our state rep was going to speak here tonight, too, and fill you in on what's going on at the state, but she was called into an emergency legislative meeting of some sort that started at 7:30. So I just wanted to pass that on. Next is, anybody else from the public wish to address us? Seeing no one, I will officially call to end the public questions and comments and move on to Councilmember comments and announcements. I hope you all had a wonderful, healthy holiday, and if you have a few dollars left over that you don't know what to do with, CARES, our community food bank, could really use the help on a continuing basis. And please feel free to consider a donation to CARES if you are able. And that's my public announcement also, so we do have a food bank as well. And CARES is located at the corner of Shiahawasi and Inkster?
Between Middle Belt and Shiahawasi.
Okay.
About a quarter of a mile west of Inkster on south side of Shiahawasi.
Right. It's the old St. Alexander's Church, if you are familiar with where that is. Next is the City Manager update.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Council, Happy New Year to all. Along the lines of CARES, I just wanted to let council know that Joe Valentine and I were privileged to be able to provide a donation comprised almost entirely of city employee contributions as part of our holiday basket raffle in the amount of $3,700 to CARES. And for those that haven't been to that facility, it's a fantastic asset for our community. You know, not only is there a food pantry there for those in the underserved community, but there's a grocery store there as well, where anybody, it's open to anybody, to come in, purchase groceries. They have a very nice store set up, where a portion of the proceeds of the purchases actually go back into purchasing food for the food pantry. So just a great setup that we have, and I commend Todd Lippa and the folks down there for the wonderful job that they've done. So really appreciate that, and wanted to certainly point that out. The American Red Cross will be hosting a blood drive at the Kostik Center this coming Wednesday, January 12, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You can make an appointment ahead of time at redcrossblood.org, and the sponsor code is Kostik Center, all one word, or you can call 1-800-RED-CROSS to make an appointment. MLK Day celebration will be held on Monday, January 17, starting at 11:00 a.m. at our Farmington Community Library, located on 12 Mile Road, and hope to see everybody there. And then also in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Day, city offices will be closed on Monday, January 17. There will not be any impact to rubbish collection for that week. And lastly, everybody's favorite topic, winter tax bills, those are due now through Monday, the 14th of February, without any penalty. So thank you.
Okay. And now we will move on to new business, consideration of approval of revised guidelines for the poverty exemption and deferred special assessments. You all have in front of you the packets that just came in regarding the updated numbers, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I apologize for not being in your packet. There was a little miscommunication there. First of all, the first packet is the revised guidelines for poverty exemption. This is necessitated by PA 253 of 2020, made a couple of changes to the Act which require changes to our guideline. One is it removed the language allowing the board review to deviate from the guidelines for substantial and compelling reasons. So now they must follow guidelines, the guidelines that are established, they're not allowed to deviate from those guidelines. The second is, is the language was changed to make the reduction or exemption either 100% of taxable value, 50% of taxable value, or 25% of taxable value. All we have done with the amendment in front of you is simply take the adopted guidelines from 2018 and replace the income-based ranges with those taxable value ranges.
Okay, so to make it very clear, the highlighted numbers are the new numbers.
It's the new values, correct.
Okay.
And then the language as well is, you have a version that's edited, and then you'll have a clean version behind it.
Right.
So all it's doing is removing it, prior poverty exemptions that were partial reductions were based off of a percentage of their income plus the homestead tax credit. It's merely replacing that language with either the 50% reduction or the 25% reduction. And when we look back through the number of people that would be affected by this, there was only seven out of 47 that would be affected by this change.
Does council have any questions?
Just.
Ken, Dr. Massey, and then Councilmember Noel?
Well, mine is more of a sort of logistical one. Obviously, we have two recommendations in front of us. Are these to be taken separately or together?
They should be separate.
Yeah, I think you should have a separate motion for each, even though they're under the same agenda item, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Noel?
Yeah, so you mentioned it was replacing the income, the reduction was based on an income.
It was a percentage of the income.
Percentage of the income, replacing it with either 25, 50, or 100%.
Correct.
Is, and I'm not asking you to read into legislators' minds, but if you could, is the intent of this to make it simpler?
Simpler and more standardized statewide is what they wanted to do.
That's kind of what I thought as well, and then that was the one change, and then, okay, I guess, yep, that's extended my questions on, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bridges?
No question.
Councilmember, anybody else? Okay, so the first one you want to go through and ask for a motion for is the poverty tax exemption?
Correct.
Okay, we all have that in front of us. Is there a motion?
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Bridges?
It resolved that City Council hereby adopts and approves the revised Board of Review Guidelines for Poverty Exemption Review dated January 10, 2022, for use in compliance with Public Act 390 of 1994 and Public Act 253 of 2020, and authorize the Board of Review on council behalf to annually update and revise the household income amounts stated in Section 4 of the guidelines in order to maintain the same percentages differences, difference between the city's household income amounts and the federal poverty standards as adjusted annually by the federal government.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Bridges, seconded by Mayor Protem Newland, and this is on the property, the poverty exemption for the taxes, and we will have this posted on our website.
Correct.
So people can look, okay, so they know what we're looking at. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It passes unanimously, and now there's the second item that deals with the special assessment districts?
Correct. It's actually the deferral or deferment of a special assessment. It's similar to the poverty exemption, where if somebody cannot pay based on their income, they can be deferred. Now, what precipitated this change was there was actually a change where it used to be you had to apply to the Department of Treasury first and receive a denial at Department of Treasury before you could come back to the local level. The Department of Treasury has recently ended their program of deferring special assessments. So now it's back to the local level. So we had guidelines in place, but the last time they were updated was 2016. Part of the reason for that is the road village ended doing local road special assessments. We haven't had a water or sewer special assessment come before council since then, but now my understanding is that there's a few of those in the works. So we needed to update our language to remove the language requiring a prior denial from the Department of Treasury, updating the average assessed value of a home, and also updating the income guidelines so that they correlate with our poverty guidelines. And then each year, the assessing office will modify these guidelines along with the poverty guidelines when we get that income information.
Okay, so this changes the income?
The income level to the 2021 level. It also removes that language.
To go to the state.
Where it requires a denial from the state because they no longer do it, and it also, one of the items in there is that you can't have a assessed value of your home greater than the citywide average. So it placed that language in there. We're just updating what that amount is for 2021 as well.
Okay. So is, anybody have any questions? Do you have a motion? Okay.
Are there questions? No, we're good, okay. Sure.
Then I'll make a motion that the City Council hereby adopts and approves the revised guidelines and application for special assessment deferment dated January 10, 2020, and authorize the city.
2022.
2022. Sorry about that.
Welcome.
Time flies, no.
Welcome to the new year, yes.
And authorizes the city assessor to annually update and revise the household income amounts in order to maintain the same percentage difference between the city's household income amounts and the federal poverty standards as adjusted annually by the federal government.
It's been moved by Councilmember Noel, seconded by Councilmember Bruce. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And again, we will post this on our website so people know what the updated income guidelines are for the exemptions, and remind people that they no longer have to go through the Department of Treasury for a special assessment deferment. And that brings us to item number three on the agenda, which is consideration of approval of the introduction of an ordinance amending the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, quote, "administration," end quote, Article 5, Employee Benefits, to amend Section 2-360 to add a new subsection relating to reemployment of court employees, CMR 1-22-01.
Good evening.
Oh, there you are.
Okay. Good evening, yes, thank you. This is, was brought to our attention by Stacy Park, the Court Administrator, who noted that her employee group is the only group in the city that was not covered by this rehire provision. So this is a request that was put through the review of both our retirement system attorney, Michael Van Overbeck of Van Overbeck, Mashad, and Timoney, and also our city attorney reviewed it, and we determined that this was an appropriate thing to extend to the employees of the 47th District Court. So it will have no financial impact, is merely the opportunity extended to the court to be able to rehire court employees under certain circumstances that comply with the policy that you see in front of you. Sorry, I have a feeling that people are leaning because they can't hear me. Does this turn on?
Yes, it is.
But it's echoing.
Yeah.
Echoing, I see, okay. All right, well, I'll just sort of try to stand straight up and not lean into it then. So that's some substance of it. This language will put them in the same position then as the rest of the city.
And this will allow you to rehire based on experience that for holes that come up that you need, somebody who's retired already may want to come back and assist on a half-time or less basis?
Correct, yes. So be able to make that determination in accordance with IRS guidelines and the city's pension ordinance, yes.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I don't.
Dr. Bruce? Oh, motion? Okay.
All right. I would move the introduction of an ordinance amending the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Employee Benefits, to amend Section 2-360 to add a new subsection relating to reemployment of court employees, CMR 1-22-01.
Support.
It's been moved by Dr. Bruce, seconded by Councilmember Bridges, and I want to remind everybody that this is for half-time employment, no more than 1,000 hours per year. So seeing no questions, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The roll call vote.
Oh, this is a roll call.
Introduction of ordinance, yes. Yep. Councilmembers Newland?
Didn't have a cheat sheet.
Yes. Noel?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes. So it passes unanimously, and that brings us to the Attorney's Report. Does anybody have any questions about the Attorney Report?
No.
Seeing none, we will now go on to item number 15, which is a closed session in consideration of entering into a closed session to discuss pending litigation regarding Dwayne Robinson versus the City of Farmington Hills et al., U.S. District Court, case number And I want to make a note that the council will return to open session immediately following the closed session to take any action that may be needed during the closed meeting. There is no action taken during a closed session. So I will now call for the closed session, which means everybody who's in our audience must leave. You don't necessarily, yes?
Madam Mayor, there needs to be a motion that has all that language in it to go into closed session for that purpose and a roll call vote.
A roll call vote. I can't just declare it for will, huh?
I wish I could say yes.
Might be, no, okay.
Madam Mayor, I would move that the council enter into closed session to discuss the issue as you have.
You should name it.
Yep.
Read it.
You should, yeah, you should read it.
Oh, do I have to read it?
Read it. He wants it, yeah.
Okay. We enter into a closed session to discuss pending litigation regarding Dwayne Robinson versus the City of Farmington Hills et al., U.S. District Court, case number 2,21-CV-10150-7FC-CI.
Mr. City Attorney?
It doesn't need to be part of the motion, but I would just state for the record that this is pending litigation.
Okay. This is pending litigation?
Yes.
For the record.
For the record, it would be to discuss the pending litigation in the case that I just read.
Which I had set you up for before.
Exactly.
Yes, is there a second?
Support.
Been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Dr. Bruce. The doctors have spoken. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote.
It's got to be a roll call.
Roll call vote. Councilmembers Noel?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, we are muddling through today. Okay, we will now go into closed session. Okay, we will now go into closed session.[1430.26]